We're gonna open up the Board of Selectmen's Meeting for April 20th. And this is a meeting to discuss, uh, meet, the first meeting of the Free Town Building Committee. Everybody here, I think, is a member or affiliated with the town. What we're gonna do is we're gonna have a presentation by Mike Josephek from ACG Consulting Group. They're the fellows, the people that did the rendition and did the study a couple of years ago. So we'll let Mike pick it up and do his presentation. And then you can all gather around and talk about what everybody's thinking. So, Mike, take it away.
Okay, thank you for inviting us.
Can we dim the lights?
Don't they dim all the lights?
Switch over there. Switch over there.
There's one right behind you.
There's one back there. It might be, yeah, yeah.
Can you see me through the window? No, can you see okay?
Perfect.
I don't wanna talk to you.
Mary, you're that tall, your head's in the way.
I know I'm small, not too much.
So, I don't know, I gotta try and stand somewhere so everybody can see. So, just a little background, once again, thank you for having us come back. A few years ago, we did a study for you. We came up with some concepts. At first, the town asked us to come up with basically like one thought process. And we kinda met with all the departments. And we listened to all their problems and all the needs. And we ended up coming up with like eight different options that you have to consider going forward. The four particular departments that were involved were the Police Department, Town Hall Admin, Council on Aging, and the Library. So each of these departments had issues with space, accessibility, functionality. So, we undertook a lot of interviews, measurements of all the buildings that were out there. We looked at code problems, ADA problems, and then we went about trying to make sense of it all. So as you know, your government center, we call it your Town Hall, the Hathaway Library, and the old schoolhouse. That's kinda like your historic center of your town. And having done a lot of historic restoration over the years, my first thought is, well, what do we, what do you have to do to these buildings? As is, they need a lot of work. There's no doubt everybody can recognize that. I was looking at the, the old schoolhouse, next to it, I'm saying, wow, that's kind of like part of the historic, I guess, society, somebody has got control of it. But I'm thinking of what are we gonna do with it? Because those kind of agencies have a hard time raising money as well and saving buildings. So, so I said, okay, what's the first option? I call it the do-nothing option. If you did nothing, you still have to fix broken windows, leaky pipes, asbestos insulation that may be falling on somebody's head, landings that have rotted through, whatever. If you did nothing, you're still gonna be spending money over the course of this year, next year, year after, et cetera. We give, we put some numbers at the end I'll give you later. So that's option one, do-nothing option. And kind of that's what's probably been happening since we did the study to today. But that's not unusual. Most towns and communities are in, facing the same thing. The, the first thing we did was, we, we took your buildings, and I had to bring them into a, a 3D modeling CAD program so I could work with something to give you some options. So I rendered the existing facility, it would be nice if it really looked like that, but right now, it'd take a little effort to get it to that point, and then the building next door. So this, we started looking at, what's option two? Option two would be, okay, go and restore and put a little addition on the existing Town Hall to give it some ADA compliance, to give you a little more added space, to revamp it so that you could use it. That would mean basically gutting it completely, lifting it out of the ground, putting a new foundation in it, waterproofing this area because it's, there's a water table there, putting it back on a new foundation, and rearranging all the spaces inside so it gives you some more workability. This will be similar to what we just accomplished in West Tisbury, which is a similar community size. They had their old Town Hall, they needed the same issues you had, space. So in the back of the building, if I can just think of the word, right in the back here, a design was put together to, which kinda replicated the front, brought the front back to the historic condition, you know, this styling, but a nice big addition in the back which almost doubled the space. And they were able to rehab the interior where it looks like a beautiful, brand-new building, which it is for all intents and purposes. And this is the addition part, which was housing the elevator and mechanical room and a new staircase. So, it's very possible to rehab what you have if you do it right, and you would be very satisfied. So, taking this one step further, here's your existing building, the way it looks now. And in the back, you can see this little jog out here. This is what you have now. And what I did was, I took and enlarged that jog. I put a gable end on the end to match the opposite side of the building. So when you look at it, most people won't even know anything was done to it. And this would be the small option two base, build-out, where you'd be able to come in and, and realign all your interior spaces. You'd pick up more storage, you'd pick up like a conference room, you'd pick up a new stairwell, elevator, new bathrooms, handicap accessible on the first, that would be in the basement, first floor, again, new spaces. Here's your new addition in the, in the back here. And again, new office spaces for all your functions. And likewise, the second floor, do the same thing. So this would be what we call option two. That's a, that's the simplest proposal, where you'd have a brand-new building for all intents and purposes. It would look like your existing building when it was probably built, beautiful, right? Option three now, we said, well, well, if we need more space, what can we do with the schoolhouse? So we started looking at the connector. And I don't know if you've all seen this, the boards, but you can look at them later, but those slides are all inside this presentation. But we're talking about rehabbing the existing building like we just talked about, but also adding a connector between the two. And you can visualize it now as what you have, and this is what it could look like if we put some sort of a connector in it. Keep in mind, these are conceptual drawings, a final artistic rendition, the architect's solution may look a little different, but in all reality, you wanna connect the two buildings together. And it could, you know, very much look like this or something similar to this. But now you can see, you have the ability for people to enter into the center of the building and go into the administrative wing, or they come into the library wing, what we'll call it. And kind of like an overview from the top, I think everything blends well. I'm hoping the historic people would think that that's a, a very sympathetic solution, but I could be wrong. But if you would have saved the, the one building, or two buildings, and turned them into one, the, the floor plans would look like this, basically. You'd have your admin here, you'd have a new elevator in the middle, machine rooms, men's and ladies, handicap bathrooms, janitor's closet, a nice common area. And then, in the school, it's unexcavated at that point, that level. It's a little different grade change there. The first floor plan, again, all administrative, like we showed you in option one, where you now you have the connector which would give you the elevator and some, some handicap bathrooms, some light, this would be now part of the library, librarian's office, a conference room that would be tied to the library, and another conference room in here. But the beauty of this is now, you can start cross-use of things. You know, the library, they need an extra conference room, there'd be one here. The Town Admin need an extra conference room at some point, there's one here. You can, you can isolate and cut things off for nighttime use by certain doors with certain passage locks or card readers or something. But now you're at least using the two buildings as one, and you're giving another life to the buildings. Second floor plan, again, same thing, with, with using some of the connector space to build in for the library, conference room, selectmen's meeting room, this would be a new selectmen's room here, for example, conference room. And, but when it's not used by a selectman, it's used by other town offices or somebody needs it, or the library or whatever. But again, cross-use of a lot of these common spaces will be a beneficial savings to you overall, rather than building separate buildings. Option four now, absolutely, we talked to the Police Department, and, you know, they have a need for a new station. So, we're looking at the site, the existing building right now is not providing the program space they need, but it could build on the same site or on a new site, which is, is gonna be part of another option, a little further in the presentation. And these are just some different floor plans from different communities. I mean, depends the size of the community, six, eight, 10,000 feet, some up to 15,000, 20,000, depends what, what you're in. But the needs what we looked at for you, we figured that we could do a nice, single-story building with between nine and 10,000 square feet and handle all the Police Department's needs. Likewise, floor plan for them would have Sally Port, evidence storage, maybe a car storage if there was a, some sort of, an accident with a car needing to be secured, evidence lockup. You've got cells in the back here, you have secured storage for guns and ammunition, things like interview rooms and booking rooms, et cetera. Then in the middle of the core, you'd have the dispatch and receiving from the public coming in. You've got the officers and chiefs and lieutenants types of officers. You've got a big conference room, you know, men's and ladies' rooms, camp rooms, et cetera. It's all single-story, you don't need any space for the offices. Again, conceptual, not your, by any means a final product for anybody, but just to be able to put some numbers to things, we had to come up with a concept. So we found out the overall size, that we need a pretty much minimum to reasonable, put a number on it, and we gave you them options. So, option five, so if you did that and you moved the police out of the scene, of the police, now we're looking at the possibility of converting the police station for use as a big hall for the senior staff. The, the site where, as you know, it already is, is close by, but that could make a nice dining room for, I don't know, 100 people, whatever it is, or whatever you serve, dances or programs or whatever. But that would be an option. Option six would be to take this building we're in and put some additions on it, rehab it, bring it to 10,000 square feet, and make the building entirely accessible. So that was option six. Option seven, again, the library is, is really almost non-functional the way it operates. The, the two locations, and one doesn't even have water or bathroom facilities in it. So, they definitely need more space. And we also looked at an option of possibly a single-story addition, excuse me, a single-story structure to house their program. And again, we, we, you know, for the size community, it's, this would be like the minimum size, somewhere nine, 10,000 square feet. And we just arbitrarily laid out a design to show that they could get their program spaces, again, conceptual. Option eight was the one we were really tasked with looking at in the beginning, a single town structure that could house everybody. And we looked at that, and naturally, everybody has their different ways of operating in a building. But there are examples of multi-use buildings across the country that house police, Town Hall, et cetera. Nantucket has one, for example. So at any rate, we looked at that as a way to save money because we're also told we don't have a lot of money to work with. So trying to keep it in budget, we looked at the site on Chase Road, right across the street, behind the school. And, you know, what we looked at is a separate police entrance and a separate police parking for the police, which would keep them isolated from all the, the general public as far as their, I'll call it, the, the, the business end of the police, other than the, the interaction with the public. So a building, something like this, we came up with as a concept. You know, it, it would serve the town for many years, being like a rich structure, very New England, very typical colonial, but this would be the driveway underneath for the police for the Sally Port. This here would be the view from the police parking, so you could see, they would be coming in over here somewhere down in the Sally Port or up here to the parking. So if they're bringing a criminal in, they're gonna bring him in through the door down here and lock it behind them. The public would be parking up and around the other sides of the building, and they would enter the police dispatch, or I don't know what you'd call it, the receiving area with a secured area so that the public could go in, talk to somebody through a glass, petition, and be buzzed in or not whether or not the, the police wanted in there. Again, each side of the building would have an entrance, whether it's Town Admin, this is the rear of the building now, whether it's Library or Senior Center. And this would be from the other side opposite the police entrance. Now, the other thing with this design, 20 years, 30 years from now, or 15, whatever amount of growth you have in the town, this would lend well to an expansion area out back if you had, because you have plenty of land back there. So if you need to do another store, a few-story addition, it wouldn't be a big problem for you to add onto the building. So, in the lower level, since most of the police activities involve dealing on this level with bringing in prisoners through the Sally Port, evidence lockup, this is the same floor plan we showed you before. Instead of being in a single family, excuse me, a single-story building, it's now in the lower level of the, of the new building. Where the offices would be, we'd, we'd construct what's called a big light well, so maybe eight, 10 feet out, you'd have like a retainer wall so that natural light would be in, so all these windows would beat the daylight. And, and again, staircases would go up and out, and all the room layout, the program space they need, would be on a low level. Now, there are options, you could, this could be just moved around, some of the space could go up, some could go down, but this was the concept that seemed to work best at the time we put it together. So on the first floor, again, you'd have Administrator for Town Hall, you'd have your Treasurers, and you'd have your Vault assessors, and each have a vault, and, you know, your Town Manager has his office, and all these different offices around the, all your Town Admin. Public would come in two different directions and deal with their, their, their business, elevator going up, conference room. Again, conference rooms could be shared by lower level, first level, second level. Second floor plan, again, we start doing some shared spacing. We'd have some of, some office space, we'd have some of the Council on Aging, food pantry, different program requirements, and I can't read it from here, I'm sorry to say, but if you look at the boards, you can see more of what the rooms are. But these are what fit the program's requirements that we did the study on. And, and then in the third floor, because of the type of facility, the library, they don't need a lot of windows, they need more wall space. So these would be, if you could picture the big gable roof, or hip roof, and the dead areas would be in the gray area. And so we'd bring book stacks basically up to a flat ceiling, so this would all be flat ceiling in here. And these windows would be in the dormers that you saw in the beginning photograph or renditions. So you'd have some natural light coming in, just in the reading areas, and you'd have stacks in all the other areas. You'd have computer rooms, et cetera, and reading areas and whatnot. But if they needed to use a conference room, they would, they would drop down and use this one on the second floor, for example. So, trying to make the most use out of, in a rather tight building, we tried to achieve financial goals. Now, keep in mind, these estimates are already a few years old, and they could be 20% higher now. And you're talking the new do-nothing repairs, I don't know if you've spent any money, Jack, but somewhere over the course of time, do-nothing may cost you 100,000, you know? Option two now was that small Town Hall renovation, where we, we're just gonna do that little addition on the Town Hall with ADA compliance, et cetera, et cetera. We're talking somewhere five to six million dollar range. And this was, like I said, a few years ago. Option three, the Town Hall with the renovation connector. So, we already know that maybe it's five million for the addition, now we're talking six, seven million dollars, the total between both. So for another million to two million, we can get in and renovate the old schoolhouse. Option four was the new standalone police station. And based on a 9,000 square foot plan, somewhere between three and a half and five million. And that price is still pretty good because, like I said, if you add 20% to it, you're gonna be right in the range. But we're doing a fire station in less than hour, which is eight, 18,000 square feet. The construction cost is 5.3, and the soft cost, I don't know, another million or something. So, so, excuse me? 6.27, yeah, so. So, option five now would be to take the old police station, excuse me, option five would be to rehab this building and make it ADA compliant. So we're talking somewhere between one and two million dollars, we, we estimate for that effort, to take this building, bring it up to standards, put some additional space in it, and ADA compliance, et cetera, et cetera. Option six would be, if we could take that little building over there and maybe spend a half a million to a million on that, to move a lot of the program space to what the police station is now, and do a little work around here to get it more code compliant. And then option seven, we looked at a new library based on a 9,000 square foot, somewhere three to four million. And then, option eight was a new multi-use structure, which would give you a total of 33,000 square feet. We're talking at the time eight to nine million for that. So, like I said, anyway, you could add 15, 20%, if you're going out today's world to bid it. Again, based on concepts, and we did not explore lots of different concepts. Do you wanna get the lights? We just wanted to come up with some plans that would fit the needs of the program space, and how much would it be for you folks? So.
Dr. Neat, those lights back there.
So at this point in time, what you wanna do is, I know there's a lot of information, I guess you start figuring out the things you should do or wanna do, but one of the things that we looked at is, if you didn't rehab the old Town Hall and the, and the school building, what's gonna happen to it? So that's one of the things you gotta think about. And if you did build one big building, is everybody gonna be able to operate out of that the way you want it to do? So, and then in between, you've got free standard structures, police, library. I know you've got a lot of things to think about. I don't know what, what you could do with all that information, other than start holding your meetings up. Is this your first committee meeting they're working on?
Yeah, we thought it would be a good idea to have you come in and just, everybody be on the same page, review everything that you've done for us in the past, so everybody has, you know, the same, same information to draw from as we move forward. But definitely, the committee is from all sectors of the town, and I think that at the end, we all have to come to an agreement on which we're, proposal we're gonna put forward to go for a designer, architectural design.
Yeah. Well, we're here to help you folks, I mean, just call upon us if we can be of any help in that, in anything you're doing just.
I think, Jim, visiting places that have, you know, revitalized old buildings and have multi, you know, structures like the Big One, and kinda look, see what they look like, and talk to people, how they're working in their towns. I know also, in Edgar Town, they refurbished their old Town Hall, I visited that a couple of summers ago. But I mean, seeing, seeing that, or seeing how it works with the Big One and everybody in, I think that would help more than two, you know, to, and then look at what we have.
I have a question on the cost. On the cost that you had on the refurbished building, did that include, because there'd be a problem with septic? If they extended the sewer line and everything, that would have to happen, did that include that price?
No, we basically looked at site specifically.
Just, okay.
Yeah. And even that has problems, like we talked about back then, you may have to put some sort of elevated parking in the back, I don't know how much land really you have access to back there, if we could, if you could tie the two together, if there's a way of, of utilizing some of the space for parking. I mean, there's nothing easy in that area, but it's not totally out of the question that you could do things. Particularly where it's historic and you have, you've got that working in your favor if you decide to go that way, you know? But we, we, we went interviewed in Swansea for their new Town, Swansea, someone said they have a new Town Hall?
Swansea.
Swansea. They got a beautiful stone historic structure, but it's, it's too small, and the site is just too small. They don't have an option like tying it to another building, and like, they're really pressed to build a new building because of it. And like I said, whatever you do with your new building, you better consider what you could do with your old one. Because it's hard for somebody like a lawyer or a doctor, someone, to come in and take over an old building and pump the money into it to bring it up to the codes when it's a private concern, you know? At least a town, you have, you have a little better opportunity to rehab your old historic structures, so. You know, it's a beautiful area down there, and it seems it would be a waste not to rehab the two buildings down there, because we're gonna still own them.
Yeah. Little content connected.
Yeah.
Right in the center, in the Commons, and they had a, I don't know if it was a VFW, and they had the Town Hall. And I would say, 15 years ago, we as a historic commission even held a meeting there so they could show us. And where they connected, when they had the elevators, they had offices, so they made use, utilize that for more office space. And it worked out really well. It's right in the center.
And again, we present this as a starting point, gives you a point to, to think about rough costs, what you can do with something, but you could come up with probably 50 different designs to, to, to look at by the time you, you get through the process, so.
On that new piece on the property on Chase Road, you only showed one plan, and it would be all in one building. Is there actually room for something like the Town Hall, but then to have a separate building, say for either the library or police or Council on Aging?
You've got a good-sized piece there. I mean, another concept we looked at and we didn't develop was almost like a letter X with a central core, where you could have, you know, a central core of your functions like elevator, lobby, bathrooms, and then each wing would come off of that. So you'd be able to have four separate buildings but stuck together on the ends to the middle, where you could share things, like maybe a big conference, whatever. But the more opportunity to share things, rather than buying four elevators, rather than buying, you know, 16 handicap bathrooms, the more opportunity there is to, to utilize, cross-utilize functions, heating systems, electrical systems, generators, all these things. That brings your overall cost down, so you're serving all your square footage for less per square foot than if you built four separate buildings, so. And that's just, just two options that you could fit on there.
On this building, is there any option for an addition to this building?
Right here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you've got plenty of land. I mean, you may have to, I mean, we didn't get too deep into, we, we do have the existing plans and the septic system. It's been a few years, so my mind is not really back into it, there's a variable here. But I believe the septic system is out front, so it's out of the way, and I think it's fairly new. So I think whatever we did with addition was gonna be able to be accommodated by that septic system, if my memory serves me right.
Would we go front?
You may go front, but again, this is what a study would have to do, particular to this. We just made some assumptions, add so much square feet, and then make it ADA compliant, and then fix code problems. So we really didn't get deep into it. But a designer would have to do that, you know? This was like the first step, seeing what's feasible, what's conceptually possible, just get your thinking in those, and putting the money together towards, saying, yes, this is what eight million costs, is what five million's worth, and, you know, just kinda give you some idea of what you can and cannot do. But also, we've identified all the problems that exist in the existing buildings, you know, whether it be asbestos, or, or broken windows, or other code failures. At least you have that now in a book, and, you know, it's, it's just thick, and, you know, there's all the materials in there. So, when you do get to the next stage, you know, when you start getting into actually designing something, and whether it's four buildings or one building, they'll be taking a lot of information, but they're gonna still go out and talk to everybody again. Players change, maybe you got, you know, new, new department heads, and they have different ideas than the last department heads may have had as far as needs, so. It's the first step, it's, you got a big process ahead of you.
Go ahead, does anybody else have questions?
We talked about that site over there, I'm fairly familiar with it. Were there any considerations when you came up with your monetary figure there relative to the, the amount of site work required for that site? That's one, because there's a lot of ledge rock, there may be have blasting and that kinda stuff, so I think that would add significant cost. Additionally, we speak about the need Additionally, we speak, uh, about the need for sewage at the town hall site as it exists. Would this new facility also require a municipal sewage or, or would it be able to be handled through a, a subsurface septic system?
Yeah, we didn't do any borries, we didn't do any subsurface investigations. So, we kinda had to go with what we could see on the ground. And you're right, if there is a lot of blasting, et cetera, then you never deal with that. But that was a site the town had that made sense. So, it's basically a rough idea, yes, you're gonna have some extra hidden costs possibly. Downtown, you're right, same thing with sewage. We know there's a problem there with the sewage and septic, et cetera. We knew there's some options to fix that, but we didn't put the costs into it. Likewise here, yes, you can design onsite separate sewage system that would so, so serve the purposes. Where it's located and how it's structured because of what you get on the ground, that's, that's all up in here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions? Mike, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For coming in here to do this.
We appreciate it, uh, we hope, you know, we get to keep serving you and, uh.
I, I, I do have one question. I, I, I try, I, I read most of this, but it's quite hefty and we just got it, got too long ago. Oftentimes, it was mentioned water table, there's water table at town. I'm, I'm not familiar, there's a ground, the ground is, is, is.
The flood plain, the new FEMA flood plain maps, they tell you where, you know, you have to consider, you go by whatever, a mean water, it would now be at like six feet.
Sure.
So, now you've got, you've got a plan for that.
Okay.
So, what we figured is we put a new foundation in.
Yeah.
It's almost like putting it in a, a rubber tub. Completely waterproof the exterior of new, uh, foundation to, to keep any water in.
So, it's not necessarily in the water table?
It's not in the water table per se, but FEMA says maybe it could be something.
Okay, thank you.
The entire Boston now.
Part of the building's in the flood plain.
Oh, absolutely, it's in the flood plain, but we have a dirt floor and it's dry as a road down there. I mean, remarkably dry, I don't know how it happens.
You'd have to design to the.
I see, so the new design would have to take it.
Design as if it's.
And look at some of your illustrations, you had an arrow going to a sill and, and other things, you know, flood, yeah, um, ground, groundwater elevation.
Yeah.
Right, well, I think, I mean, I, I know memory, in the old times in town, can remember when the village flooded and there's pictures of Ryan Hagan stall with the water halfway up the wall.
Flood, flood, flood elevation, flood zone is, in my mind, is different than groundwater.
Right, right. Right.
So, that's why, it's absolutely in the flood plain.
Yeah.
But it didn't go in the town hall at that time in fifty-four?
We had flooded a couple of years ago, that whole sum was all wet.
It was, but it came in from the outside, it didn't come off from the ground. You know, I remember that.
Anybody else?
Too well.
All right, Mike?
Well, thank you all again and hopefully.
Thank you.
You seen you, feel free to call us.
If you're, if you're gonna shut down, you'll be all.
Let's take a, let's take a five minute recess until, so that Mike can get his stuff together and then we'll continue.
I think the process works is, uh, this is a long, this is a long process, right? I think Paul, have you, you on the elementary building committee or no? Are you on the building committee? So, being on three building committees and I think you've been on a building committee in Norton, have you?
Quite, but yeah.
Yeah, it's a long process and this is just, the feasibility study that the town did is just the first step, right? It just looks at all the buildings, tells us what we can do, not what we should do, just options like he, like he laid out for us. They don't get into the, the mechanical part of it or the, the water table part of it or the, they just look at buildings and where they can go and, and what, you know, what we can do with it. After we as a committee come down to some decisions on which avenues we wanna go, then we go into designer selection, architectural services. And we have several companies come in and they do a spiel in front of us and then we vote on which company we like the best and that's the company we go to. So, this company can be one of those people or not one of those people. But before we do that, we have to narrow what our vision is and then we have to do a warrant article to go for, forward with designer selection services. And then once we have that money, we can do an RMP, they can apply, they can, you know, do the bid specs. Their, that feasibility study is like their bible, they'll stop to draw from some of that stuff, they'll look and investigate their own things and then, um, then they'll come up with some hard numbers for us. But it'll, it'll be what our vision is in the end. Look, we all come from different facets of the town, but at the end of the day, it's what can we sell to the town and what's best for the town? Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
And at some point, we'll have to get a chair and all of that other stuff, but right now, we'll just.
So, I guess tonight's a good starting point and, and Lisa has had the experience of doing this before at the schools. And what I'd like to, to start off with is just have, we talked about four departments. The town hall, consider it as one department, library, COA and police department. I'd like to touch base with each one of the departments. Tell us what you, tell us about your needs and what you envision happening here. So, you want to start off, just COA?
Okay, when we first started out, um, we had five hundred and twenty-two seniors. We are now up to twenty-five seventeen. I guess the, um, what they envisioned for twenty-twenty was that we'd probably have maybe two thousand seniors. And we've already surpassed the twenty-twenty expectation. We don't have enough space. Everybody's running around to squeeze somebody in. Like every department, we need more storage. The concept of having these senior citizens going on a second level, I think, is a bad concept because a lot of them have their wheelchairs and their walkers and, um, a lot of them, uh, don't wanna go on an elevator. So, I think having a senior center on a first level would be better than anticipating a second level. Plus, um, we have a grocery room which supplies anyone that will need, that could show you to go. And we get deliveries from different people and, um, being on a second level would be really bad for us because, I think, sometimes we get like sixty cases of goods that are delivered to us. And, um, it, it's hard carrying that, they're heavy, the cases are heavy. Sure, we have volunteers, but, um, most of our volunteers are elderly people. So, I personally, and I have talked to the director, um, figured that being on a second level shouldn't be for the COA. I've talked to, um, the director again and we've gotten information. Uh, we, we need quite a bit more, uh, square footage than what they anticipate for a multipurpose center. They anticipate thirty-three thousand square feet. Well, um, we call Rochester, just for an example, because they're closest to us in, in town wise. They started out with a little over five hundred seniors and they built their brand new facility of five thousand six hundred square feet. They are up to a little over a thousand now and the fifty-six hundred square feet is, is not viable for them.
So, how much do you, do you guys have an idea how much you need?
Uh, anywhere, probably in the ten to twelve thousand square feet.
Ten to twelve thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Just an idea what that is, what would be this for?
This, this building, both floors is three thousand five hundred and twenty square feet.
So, it's fifteen?
Five hundred and twenty.
So, it's fifteen hundred a floor, above fifteen hundred?
Uh, about seventeen, what, about seventeen hundred.
A floor?
Floor. Seventeen fifty.
Those numbers that you gave us before, do those reflect any senior housing that may come into town? Do you know?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
No. Which, I mean, it's a total different thing. It's, nobody anticipated the growth of the senior population and it's gonna get a lot higher. You've got the baby boomers that are coming in and, uh, I don't know what the next generation of this call.
I think that you're not only gonna see that grow, but I think that you're gonna see families grow as well. I think that the middle is gonna stay somewhat stagnant. I go with Amazon coming in, entry level positions and whatever else is coming down the horizon, which there are a couple more projects, you're gonna see, you know, those, those, those entry level positions come in and start to grow their families here. So, you're gonna have two spectrums in town.
Two larger spectrums.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, um, we need to service, I mean, we are servicing, it doesn't seem like we service a lot of people, but all the people come into the senior center. Either for advice or the grocery room, uh, events that we're having, card playing, the meals that are served here. We do service a lot of seniors and there's a lot of them that fall in the cracks as well that we're not even aware that we could serve because nobody is letting us know. So, I mean, our, our growth is leaping quite a bit. And, um, I, I don't wanna see it happen that we don't have enough space in say ten years from now. Um, right now, um, the senior center in Rochester has ten point six seven square feet per senior. We have probably five point six square feet per, per senior. There are no limitations on the square footage per senior. But you can see just in a few years, from two thousand and ten to now, how we've grown so that we really need, need more space than anticipated. And I, I think the multipurpose center, um, I think you're gonna need a lot more square footage. Okay?
Yours Janet Tisdale, sorry, I was just, identify yourself.
Oh, sorry. You have Tisdale. I'm going with you.
And you know what? Every day that goes by, somebody comes to see you. Can you imagine that?
Oh, I can imagine.
Have you crossed that line yet?
Nope.
You?
You know.
Oh, I have, I have. Go ahead, Lucille.
Lucille Rosa Library. Back in two thousand and one, um, I'm embarrassed to say, we were given a grant, um, by the state which had matching funds approved by the town to the tune of fifteen thousand from the town and fifteen thousand from the state for a library planning and design grant. We have worked on it and fits and starts and, um, we are at the point where we really need to, at the least, complete that planning and design phase. So, the, um, the state, uh, has a new requirement where we are supposed to hire a project manager to oversee the planning and design of the, the library. And, um, the money that we have would, in theory, hopefully, cover both that project manager and the architect doing the, uh, floor plans. At one point in time, well, when we very first got approved for the planning grant, the state used to require that you would build a library that would serve a population of two square feet times the number of people that your, uh, town was projected to have twenty years down the road, which would have given us a library probably of someplace between twenty and twenty-two thousand square feet. They have since decided that that is, uh, they've changed that requirement. Now, they say that the town can build whatever size library they feel they can afford. The amount of money that the state gives you towards actual construction, it has increased. When we first got the grant, it was, um, I believe, twenty-five percent of the construction. Now, it's increased to forty-five to fifty percent of your construction cost. So, um, that, that is tremendously good news. So, what we are looking right now to do is to complete the design phase and, um, the town, from what I can see from the, the drawings that were made, the town looks like they're hoping we can fit the library in nine thousand square feet. And if we were allowed and enabled to do the, the planning phase right now, just the floor plans, we'd be able to tell if we could fit, uh, you, if, if nine thousand square feet would be big enough. If not, what, what would we project we need for floor space? One floor would be fine with us. Books are very heavy, so probably a ground floor right on the slab would be good. Either that or a really strong floor that was designed to take the kind of floor load you need.
Are you thinking of the central library to encompass both of the other two libraries?
Yes, yes, one, one library, both library, uh, collections would then merge into that, that one space.
And that would, you think in this, in the center of town?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna skip back for a second. Grants, I know that there were some grants available at some time, um, in the last couple of years for design services for COAs. Do you know if there's any available right now?
I'm not sure, but I can.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions? We've visited a lot of, um, new libraries or renovated libraries recently and, um, we've been looking to having, um, a children's space, staff space, processing space, space for the stacks, obviously, um, room for the patrons to sit and use the collections. A conference room, if we had to share one in the same building, uh, that, that would be fine. I mean, we'd be, if we had a, a conference or meeting room, um, we'd certainly have it open to the, the whole town for the, the use of the town.
Listen, anybody can ask you any questions, so if you have any questions, just shoot them.
Yeah.
What would happen with the white?
Um, the white library is held by trust, so it would go back to the trust. The town doesn't own it.
The town doesn't own the white library.
No, no, I know, I just, there was the, the, uh, a time lease or whatever, it's, it would just, it would revert back to that.
Yes.
There's no lease on that property.
No.
Cool.
Okay. Would you be open to, uh, the schoolhouse option?
Um, see, you mean using the, uh, the old schoolhouse?
Yeah, the, the expansion of the town hall and.
I sincerely don't believe that would give us any place near enough room.
Well, it, it may, we don't know, but I think you have to consider that, that means anybody in East Street Town that she was making, would have to all the way.
And it would, it would not solve that problem.
That's gonna be a tough sell.
So, you might need to leave the.
That's one of the problems that we're trying to.
In operation.
That's one of the problems that we're trying to solve.
Build a central one.
Or be able to set one, yeah.
And I think that's.
But I mean, if the schoolhouse was used, um, it probably still, I mean, that would still need something on the other end.
Like an annex.
It still need, need the white library.
Yeah.
Would the elementary school be notched and put away from the, the wing that they don't have?
I have to give everybody a floor, I see outside people using, with, you can't commingle students and outside people.
It was built that way?
Yep.
Okay, um, when you first go in those, those middle doors, um, where the office is, it was built that way. So, both corridors would be, would be shut down. So both corridors would be, would be shut down and you could only go in that way. But I think we tried talking to them about that not that long ago and we never got any.
Those doors are not a walk, I believe, we have re buzzed in currently.
The front doors, yeah.
It was designed, it was for the town.
Yeah, it was, it was designed for the town.
But that was before the, uh.
A lot of that happened before regionalization, wasn't it?
It was before regionalization.
Not in middle school, they, they designed this so that conference room and the, our people could use the gym and cafeteria without the rest of the school, you know, after hours and things like that. Not during hours, not during school hours, ever.
I've seen complaints with, I'm sure you've all seen complaints with voting days and people, we have an office of station there and everything and still complaints that people are coming in with the students around.
You just had one of these last election.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Now, one more question, Lucille. If we did the schoolhouse option, town hall option for the library, as the plan indicated, the, the library across the street could still be used as an archive or, you know, for books, storage. And that, you know, that would reduce the need for that type of space in, in the library itself.
But, but when we're trying to sell this to the whole town, you're gonna have East Freetown not vote for it because they're not gonna go from East Freetown near the Middle Borough Line all the way over.
White stays open.
But why, why?
But we're not gonna have enough, first of all, we need to know that we have enough money to, A, support the buildings and, and operational costs, I, I don't know if it's feasible, it's an option, but I don't, I'm not sure it's feasible.
You gotta remember that you've got the whole town that has to vote on the money issue. And certainly, if you say, we're gonna build a new library in a sonnet, and you guys in East Freetown either gonna have to come to a sonnet.
Use your little library over here.
You know, or you're gonna have the same way, I mean, chances of that, you know, you never know how people think.
That's, that's why.
What you wanna put, East Freetown.
That's what they'll say though, right? I mean.
No, no.
You can call it the East Freetown Library and build it in a sonnet.
No, it's a hard, it's a hard thing for you.
It is.
Because it has to be centrally located, it's just like, it's just like moving, say, say we're gonna move the senior center to the old schoolhouse. It's not gonna fly because the seniors won't go all the way over there.
The police station down there, that's not gonna fly either.
No, it used to be there.
All right.
Yeah, that's right. All right, the PD, you guys.
Are you going through each department?
Yeah.
Okay.
Each department? I told you we're going through four, okay.
Well, she's town hall.
Oh, you, oh, you're handling town hall?
No, no.
I'm not handling town hall.
Well, if you're handling town hall, go do it.
I, I'll give a little bit of input, I mean.
Hold on, let me, let me get another page from town hall.
All I, I, I would like to see is not to make the same mistake that we've made in, in past years with the police department, with the COA, and doing a building and spending all this money that in ten years from now, or even five years from now, those needs will not be met and we're gonna have to be doing this again. If we look, I've, I've visited other towns, we've had, I've had meetings in other towns where we've had clerks meetings. I was just in one last week, I think it was Westwood, I've been in Carver. They've got these beautiful, beautiful libraries, they have meeting rooms, conference rooms. Libraries are a lot more than what they used to be, they're not just for reading books anymore. The town hall, I would want to see not end up the same way, like I said, like the police department and the council on agent has. And looking, I, I went through this book and I put down what they show as existing square footage, the needs assessment and the recommendation, I put it all on one sheet. And every single one of them, the needs assessment and their recommendation is not needing the needs assessment. The town hall, they're saying the lead needs assessment is twelve thousand square foot, but yet with the small addition, it's, it was like only nine thousand. So I'm saying, if we're not gonna even meet the needs of today, where are we gonna be in ten years?
You gotta do it right.
And the same thing for the police station, they're showing the needs assessment of, I think, twelve thousand, which is almost what they wanna give, almost what the town hall is, and they only wanna give nine thousand. The library, the, the standalone library was a little bit more, but I don't even know if that's enough. So I'm saying, everybody has these needs and there's a lot of stuff that, they interviewed everyone at these departments and I saw stuff in here, like for the town clerk's office that wasn't even in here. So we have departments like the historic commission, we have cemetery zoning boards who do not have offices in the town hall. We should have an area where they got their filing cabinets for their records and stuff. Because we've had clerks that sometimes their departure from the town might not be on good terms and we have records missing of minutes or whatever. So it's good to have an area that's gonna be just for filing cabinets for these boards that don't have.
Really, in Freetown, we all get along.
We do, we do. We have a copyer machine in my office that people come in to use. And the reason why it's in there is it used to be in the hallway and Jenny had people just coming in taking copies. So they said, no, this isn't for the public to use, it's for the town hall use. They put it in my office. When they come and did the assessment, they were surprised to see how many people kept coming in and out of my office to use that machine where I got a safe that's open. And then the town clerk's office, they were very surprised where we have records that are public records and so forth, like for vitals. There should be a room where, where there can be a copyer machine for people to take copies and stuff. They've got a mailroom that's too small to put it. Upstairs, the copyer machine is on.
Is that a mailroom?
We have a closet.
No, they've got a mailroom in here.
Oh, 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 we have a closet down there.
But they've got a mailroom that they're showing. So I'm saying, a lot of the room that's being shown on this, this new plan for the town hall, bathrooms on every floor, a common area on every floor, a conference room on every floor. There's a back stairway, I don't know where that's gonna be, but evidently there's gonna be another section to the back of the town hall or something.
He's gonna build an addition to the back and I think he's gonna rework some of the offices and put some that are in the front to the back. He's gonna be, he's gonna take down the walls and do, you know, that's what it sounds like.
That's what I'm saying, there's like, once you, all this stuff that's coming in, there's gotta be room for an elevator, a hallway and all. It sounds like the offices are not gonna get any bigger, if anything, it almost sounds like they're gonna get smaller.
Well, that's the other thing too, you need to know how many offices there are in town hall that we need. And then how many, what's the square footage of each office that you need?
So that's what I'm saying.
And what we need, if you talk about recreation and historic commission and all these committees, what amount of space? I mean, and I've said before, I mean, I have all the records. There is no place except the one file cabinet to keep my records. And, you know, you get the minutes, but, you know, the plans from the bridge, everything, there's no room.
Same thing with zoning. Zoning has, has tons of, of things. Planning board doesn't have sufficient room and, and upstairs and stuff either for all the maps and everything she's got. So I'm saying, if there's anything that I think we need to accomplish on here, it is to make sure our needs are met now with whatever building we go with. And then to look at, to maybe have a little extra space so that in ten years from now, we still have, have land in town to be developed and everything. So the population should go up in another ten years or so. And just like for the council on agent and the library and everything else, should have that extra space and room for growth, we should too. And that's the only thing I really wanted to say about the, not just the town hall, but I think all the buildings.
Well, Jackie, I think what you're saying is stuff that has gone on in the past. For example, police department, when, when that building was put up, it was supposed to be a two-story building. By the time they got done and the money issues, it ended up being blocks stuck together without even concrete in between. They poured concrete down and they stuck on the end. I mean, it, it just turned from something good to something just junk. You get the same thing on the COA, not that the COA is junk, but what I'm saying is the COA, I mean, that was done on a shoestring. It was, I mean, it was donated most, a lot of the stuff was donated. And you can't do things the right way if that's how you're gonna do it.
So that's the only thing I'd like to say, is not to make that mistake again and, and to look forward, you know, and to make sure our needs are met for now, never mind, you know, in the ten years from now. And from some of the things that I saw there, it didn't look like that was gonna happen.
Just remember, this is not the company we're going with, this is just, so when we, that one, yeah. Right, when we look at that, we have to just, when we look at a new company coming in to give us those designer specs, those are the things that we'll bring out. They'll wanna know how much you want for square footage in an office, they'll wanna know those things. So just keep that in mind, that this is just, this is, do we go, option one, option two? What do we do? That, I think this is just how we narrow it down for us.
And we don't have to stick with these options.
No.
Because, I mean, for example, a lot of work was done in the police department this year, over the winter, to make that building functional, but it's too small for our department. So you don't just throw away that, that building. That building can house other departments that probably don't even need to be in the town hall in space. So that's some of the stuff that I think this committee has to think about, you know?
Let me just ask one option, do, does property for sale on the side of the fire department? Has the water supply been checked into that at all? It's supposed to be for sale by the diocese.
Two separate lots, correct?
And supposedly it's, it's not expensive, I'm just saying.
It goes straight through, it's two, I believe it's two separate lots, it goes from one to the other. Do we own the property between the fire station and the, the baseball fields?
The fire station, the baseball fields, I believe.
Yes.
I believe so.
We also own something next to the school, don't we, the property next to the school, uh, next to the big parking lot, I believe.
In between us and.
Down Bullock?
No, not going down Bullock, Memorial Drive.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's all, all that is on, basically from, say.
That corner and all the way to the highway bond. Because if you look in here, it shows.
That's the piece that they were looking at, doing that centralized.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's why I had asked, so that centralized building, they, they only showed that one plan. They never showed, like, if there was a separate building for, say, library or police and.
Well, don't forget, they were constrained by, by price too. I mean, we had so much money that was approved to do this, this study. So they're not, they're gonna give us what they can give us for what we're paying them. But, you know, as this committee moves on, then we, you know, it depends on the way the committee's gonna go, then we have to do this, basically do this all over again. Not, I mean, for the focus, not all the, but for the focus, scope, focus.
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
Can we let the PD go now?
Well, I guess I'll start, I'm Ben Lebeck from.
Oh, you mean, there's gonna be two of yous?
Yeah, it's two of us here, so we kinda funneled it around. That's Sweet Magnet.
Didn't they only get one ticket in?
Yeah, drag him out. Basically, as you guys have already kind of mentioned, the, the building that's here now was insufficient at its, you know, at the outset. Since then, we've grown well beyond the capabilities of the building. Whether you're talking about just the equipment and, and files that we have, we had to use a, you know, with two trailers, actually three, a third at the highway department as well, that we have to use to store our stuff. And even those, you know, we risk ruining things due to rodents and, and water damage, temperature problems, all that stuff. The, the building itself is completely maxed out. The, the cells not only are inadequate to what our, you know, the business that we give it, but the, what the state requires us to do, we're, we're supposed to be separating males, females, juveniles. We have to play a game with that, we have to shuffle people around. We can't even house, you know, victims and suspects at the same time and try to handle interviews. You know, so, you know, have, just having people around in the same building, they, they can hear each other through the building. It's, we just, it, the building just simply doesn't meet the needs of the town. Certainly not the staff or any of the things that, that people expect it to do. Then, of course, you know, you know, Paul talked about some of the, you know, you know, this, this winter, we, you know, did some upgrades for the, for the climate control and stuff in the building. Even at that, like, you're at the end of the building, we're still using space heaters and stuff after, what was it, Paul, thirty grand you threw into it? Forty grand?
Forty-five.
Yeah, all right. Into a heating system that the walls are so thin, because of the type of construction it was, we're still using space heaters and stuff if you have to be in there for any amount of time.
Just to extend, I'll give you a specific last Easter, very unfortunate. We had, the station was basically overwhelmed in one shift. We had domestic violence arrests, in which we had to assist a victim in getting refuge, so we had to take her out. We also had to take out the arrestee, the perpetrator, so now we have two people. Then we had another domestic, this is Easter Sunday. Another domestic.
Festive holiday.
Yeah. We had a daughter who had issues, you know, like a forty-year-old daughter had issues with, issues with her mother. They got into an altercation, she was arrested. Okay, now we have a mother and son that's there writing a victim statement and applying for a restraining order. So now we're up to five people. And then, you know, we got people coming in to bring bail money and this and that. So it's very easy for the station to get overwhelmed. It doesn't happen on a daily basis, I won't tell you that, that it happens on a daily basis, but it does happen on a weekly basis. We have no place to store large amounts of evidence. Just this week, we had a situation where we seized ninety-seven firearms from a bona fide collector. No place to put them. Some of the weapons we were handling were just collector's items. One of them was from like nineteen, two of them from nineteen forty-one, you ever seen the movie, what is it, Enemy at the Gates? The Russian and German World War One sniper rifles, I mean, they're collector's items. They went into a shed. Unfortunately, that's the way, that's what happens. A lot of times, I try to encourage my guys, sensitive discussions happen about people's private lives and we deal with it on, on a, on a daily basis. And it's, it's nothing for us to talk about it in our break room or talk about a call in our break room, or talk about something in our sergeant's office. Someone who doesn't have any interest in those calls can walk into the foyer and stand there and hear people's private issues. Well, yeah, you know, so the common hallway gives amplification, I try to, you know, try to tell people, hey, keep your door shut. Shut your doors, shut your doors, keep your doors shut. You know, guys forget, people forget, they're moving around, they don't do it. The other thing I, I would say is that the proposal, and I know this is set in stone, the proposal to have twelve thousand square feet for the, for the, for the police station, I would say is inadequate. I don't know exactly what that number is. I've been looking at the numbers that they gave, the increases, and I would say some of the increases are marginally increased. They, there probably should be a little more of an increase on the square footage. And then, most importantly, while there may be a, a cost savings with a multipurpose building, I feel that as a taxpayer, there are issues that walk into our front door a lot of times that should be kept private. You know, Sweet Magnet's son did something wrong. Now I walk into the wrong doorway and I'm looking for the police because the police called me because my son did something wrong. I'm not saying that our town's workers will say anything. But you might have, you know, Johnny Cashman there to pay his water bill and he hears something that he shouldn't. There are issues that are private. So, you know, and there are very sensitive things that happen to people that they like to keep private. And we try our best to do that. Given, given, seeing that, you know, while it, you know, it would be a cost savings with the, the one building, I just think as a matter of service, you know, the, the separate building option for the police department is something that I would propose for, for high consideration. And I, you know, this, the, the building speaks for itself. I mean, if anybody wants to come in and just take a look, you can see what we've been working with, you can see that. You know, like on the Fourth of July, when we have the staff, you know, for fireworks, fifteen to eighteen guys? Fifteen to eighteen guys overrun that station. Right, you know, right, Paul?
No room.
So, you know, we say, okay, let's have a roll call, let's talk about what we're gonna look for tonight, let's talk about what's gonna happen tonight, you know, this, that, the other, and we have to stuff people into that general purpose room. And then we've got guys in the hallway eating pizza because the union. And then we got guys in the hallway eating pizza, because the union buys dinner for the guys. And we're, hey, can you give me a slice of, you know, sausage? You know, and we're handing it out and we're just trying to talk about what we need to do. You know, it's just ineffective. You know, it's ineffective.
One, one thing also, there's a lot of criminal, not activity, criminals around the police station just by nature. Having them with children going to a library, sex offenders have to register in the police database. So you have sex offenders registering in the police station. You don't really necessarily want that with the library or all the town.
We get, and we get, and we get, we get some people sometimes that, sorry, not that, you know, they're not happy. They're angry. You know what I'm saying? And it's, and it's nothing criminal, it's, it might be just to complain about something. You know, I have one guy who came in, he wants to complain because his chainsaws got ripped off and he wants to know what's going on. And he's not the quietest person, he's, he's angry.
He's got a lot of hair in him, too, he works in a sawmill.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, those are the type of things that I would say that, you know, we as, um, on this committee should consider. And, you know, we do a good, I think we do a great job in trying to keep people under control, but I don't wanna sit here and say, we'll get it done one hundred percent of the time. I would hate for someone to overpower like one officer and the next you know, they got the run of the town hall, they got the run of the senior center, next you know, they're trashing the library. Like, I don't think it would last too long, don't get me wrong, but it's just something where we think that.
I have, I have a question, it kind of piggybacks up what you said, um, and not to bring up a sore subject, I'm sure with the, with the police department, uh, or police officers across the country. But I've noticed, uh, disgruntled citizens have, uh, made it a habit more recently to make police stations a target of their anger. And again, I'm not trying to get you guys riled up here, but understand that...
What about themselves?
But, but you know what I'm, I mean, we have had incidents where police officers have been shot within the confines of the police department parking lot. Like ambushes. So my point is to piggyback on the safety, whether it's a, a criminal, a violent criminal that you guys have, are attempted to do something with and they go, what? In this day and age, in, in trying to make this a, a giant soft target, if you will, uh, I'm not trying to get people amped up, but you, you, you guys have read, I'm sure you've seen, right? Uh, state police and different, uh, and, and local police officers have been ambushed in the parking lot. And I, I don't think that's a good look for children going into, uh, y- y- you know, it's not a good look anywhere, but the fact of the matter is, why invite all the general public into this?
Right.
So I guess it's piggyback on that idea. I, I guess if I had to say something, it would be, I'd probably like to see a standalone police station away from library, councilon agent, the school, you know, and, and more importantly, the water pump.
I, I would, you know, and I would say, like, you know, if, you know, like, say, you know, I know it was brought up and talked about, you know, like, the apostle across the street and the site work and stuff like that. Like, if, if that was the place where you wanted to go and, and there was a series of buildings that were gonna be built there, I would say that the stance of the police department should be one of, one that can't be mistaken. Like, if someone wants to target the police and take their fury on the police, that's where they're gonna go. You know, they're not gonna go to the town hall and they're not gonna go to the library or, you know, whatever, so where you decide, like, they know the police department's over there. There's no confusion, you know? And if they decide to do something over here, like, we can quickly warn for lockdown, you know, uh, secure in place procedures and stuff like that. We can deal with the problem, you know? Whereas if we're in the building, it presents a whole different...
You don't want them taking out the whole municipal government.
Well, it just, it just presents a whole different, um, you know, a whole different, uh, realm.
That's who gets the...
Well, the other thing is, I think, you know, it's nice to hear from everybody that needs, but it's pretty hard to tell ten years what we're, what we're gonna really need. I mean, because we don't know how things change. And I think that some departments are gonna grow quicker, others may grow smaller. And so one building makes it very tough. I think standalone buildings, a lot, in other words, if the fire department right now, for example, had to grow or close the other fire department, you could add to that building. You see what I'm saying?
Right.
If it was one building, you're kind of like stuck. This is, you're, you're limited. If you got twenty thousand square feet, it's forever twenty thousand square feet. Where a standalone building would allow, if the need be, add a garage or whatever, or something for storage or whatever.
You know, to, to Paul's point, not to say about Paul, you know, when they built the, the, the police station over here, you know, it was supposed to have a basement. They, they cut the basement out. Hence, they moved the heating system upstairs into these little, uh, crow's nests, if you will. I don't, I don't know what they call them, I think they call them crow's nests.
Crawl spaces, basically.
Something like that.
It's an attic crawl space, it's really not.
Scott will tell you, it's a nightmare up there, it's, it's not pretty at all. I've been up there, they, I remember when our boilers used to quit on us and I'd squeeze up there with my gun belt and refire boilers and stuff like that on the midnight shift. And you hope it doesn't backfire on you, you know, because there's no way to really get out quick. Like, if it goes, like, you're kind of trapped. Thank you.
You might get out quick, especially if it pours, you go right up the side.
Yeah, you gotta go up the side. So I, I would say, like, you know, um, talking about expansion and shrinkage and, and, um, building, building something that would allow for, for, for expansion, especially, you know, basement, like, the footprint would reflect, you know, basement and the first floor. And then I would say, if you don't even wanna finish a second floor, just build it structurally so if that expansion is needed down the road, you can do it. Nothing says you have to finish it off, nothing says you have to go three floors, you know, just a basement.
Well, the elementary school was designed for a second floor, but you can't pull.
Right, yeah, I always remember hearing that, right?
I mean, we don't have it, but it was designed, if you had to, you could put a second floor.
But every school that we did is built for a fifty-year plan. So whatever it is, there's always options. So it'll last fifty years, yep. In every building that we've just done.
Yeah.
I think that's important.
I, I don't think it's feasible to have one.
No, I don't.
I don't think it's feasible.
Is everybody good with no, can I just see from, uh, just to raise a hand of the one building option, how many people are in favor of that? Yep, well, so one building for everything.
Okay, so how's every building?
Yeah, everything.
Only giant building, though.
The multi-use, one-purpose?
No. I mean, it's not a, it's not an ugly building, but I just don't think it fits the needs.
The other thing, some things should be able to commingle into one building.
I agree.
But there's some things that have to be standalone.
Totally agree.
You, you don't want a police department, th- these guys are making very good points. They don't, they don't wanna be, they don't need to be where kids are coming, libraries and so forth, but they may need to be near the school.
Nearby.
So they can respond quickly.
That was my question about where the fire station is versus the baseball fields. It's closer, it's a nice area, it's close to where the fire station is now, it's centralized in town. It's close to the school, but yet it's separate. It's its own separate entity, you know, and I, I think that might be an option. I don't know what other properties we own in the area besides...
We shouldn't find you out by going to the assistant's office.
Sweet, how many square feet in that building presently do you have?
Uh...
Twenty-eight hundred.
What is it, thirty?
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred, yeah.
And, and what do you anticipate your needs are?
About thirteen thousand.
They're saying, they're saying they gave nine thousand in this study.
No, what do you anticipate your needs are?
I would say it's more than thirteen thousand. I would say it's, it's about fifteen thousand, two floors.
What did the question...
So for, for a total of thirty.
Yeah, and, and that was, yeah.
That's not, that's not big enough. What did the question do?
I don't have the, the final, uh...
I know they were, they were, they were over ten. They were, I think, I think they were twelve, wasn't it?
It wasn't a lot more than ten, it was, yeah.
And the, the biggest thing, you know, a lot of discussion happened, you know, has happened in talking about the police station, you know, that's what we talk, and we go to stations all around and, and see things they've done. And the one thing I think we miss is the basement. If our forefathers didn't cut out the basement, you probably would not be in a situation where you would wanna probably jettison this building as a police station. You probably could have got away with a, an adequate-sized addition and been done with it, you know? But the fact that they got rid of the basement, because now, most police stations you see now, they kind of, if they can, they can build into their grade, if they can build, build into a grade, they'll put all their prisoner processing in the basement, all their lockup in the basement, all your locker rooms in the basement, all your large evidence in the basement. And then as you move upstairs, now that's more for your administrative, for your citizens to access, for meetings, for interviews, et cetera, et cetera. That's what your, your ground floor is. Mostly your, your, um, your other operate, your daily operations are on your, on your, on your ground floor and, and, and a lot of the stuff that people don't necessarily have to be involved in with, you know, people that happen to get arrested.
I'll see.
Yeah, you're not gonna be...
Well, interestingly, they didn't mention Jackie Nettles from putting a cellar underneath it, like they did at the town hall.
Or the slab, it's a slab.
It'd fall apart.
That thing would fall apart. I mean, those blocks are just set on top of each other and skimcoated.
They're, they're...
That's why they brought dirt around it and, you know, Lisa may have been a kid at the time, and I don't think, and I'm pretty sure Bob Joe's...
They probably weren't even born.
I probably should, I, I know Bob Joe was born.
I was born.
When the police station went up in seventy-eight? Was it seventy-eight?
I remember my mother working down the, the other one going down there.
Oh, yes, she used to work down, down there.
And I got on the elementary school bus and had the new police station in seventy-nine.
It was just a shame to watch the building committee do what they did. I mean, with all due respects, I mean, they took a building that was gonna be functional and just stripped it. It was nuts.
They had, the pipes actually run through the concrete walls. And when I was working maintenance, we had water and I actually had to drill holes in the base of the interior walls and drain water out of the wall. And how do you fix a, a, a copper pipe inside of a concrete cinder block wall? So, you, you know, I think to Jackie's point, if we're gonna do this, we do it right? With an eye on the future, with an eye on expansion. Uh, Sweet, a- and, and Ben, you, you keep talking about two floors. Is it, does it have to be two floors or could it be a, a sprawling ranch-style kind of one floor? Or is it just, it makes better sense to do two floors?
I think all's cheaper. I'm not, I'm not a contractor by any means, but I...
No, no, I'm just asking.
The way I, the way I always understood it is, uh, but you gain, you gain more bang for your buck by doing the basement.
You do, absolutely. And especially a walkout style, like you said, build it into a grade, a walkout style that you can utilize that space. Absolutely, I just didn't know if there was something that, you know, a recommendation, a national recommendation from police officers that, that needed to be done.
Well, the only thing I could see that would happen with doing the, like, kind of the sprawling design would be that you would get away from having to have an elevator because it would be ADA compliant, accessible, et cetera.
Sometimes it's easy to do single-floor add-ons later on, so...
Yeah.
The, the curious, and we talked about this earlier. Am I talking on a turn now?
Sorry.
Okay.
Who are you?
No, I just wanted to be...
Can you say your name for the record?
Joe Schmo.
Sometimes.
Yeah.
Joe Schmo.
Joe Schmo.
There you go.
Cookamo.
There may be a need for two committees because if, if we're going to be building, uh, all new standalone, we're gonna have all these old structures. We talked about that earlier. So there may be a need for a building reuse committee, because I could see, if these buildings have trouble, now, we're not gonna be able to market them as rental property or anything else with the existing issues. All those compliance issues and code issues are going to need to be addressed going forward.
I don't think we, I don't think we've had that, I don't, and I haven't heard anybody say anything about leaving those buildings behind yet. I don't know if we've, I don't, I haven't made that decision.
Right, well, okay.
Right, 'cause the next person up is Mary.
Right, but we've heard that the COA isn't big enough, so we're gonna need more space for this here, so it could be an addition, I guess. The libraries, we're gonna have to build a new library, so that means two libraries are not gonna be...
Well, only one.
Because the white goes back.
The white doesn't belong to the town.
Doesn't bother us, right, right, right.
Which is nice.
Yeah.
But it could be, it could be, I mean, we haven't even discussed other options. It could be one building for COA and library. And it could be, we use the, the grant money available for the library part and if there's li- a grant money available for the COA part, then we can co- from the state, we can commingle those funds and probably get more.
Basically, everything's on the table, right?
Yeah.
And it would make two compatible groups.
It'd be too compatible, I think that would be...
Lucille, didn't we try to do that once before with the board, that they were gonna port the town hall with the library? And they did that or remind us?
They said the money that, that we were given for the library can only be used for the library. But it doesn't mean that you can't plan a commingled building.
I remember we had tried something once before, okay, from historic.
Yes.
Well, ba- basically, um, I'm involved with this, and historic properties in town and reusing, um, I think, we don't want to just leave our town buildings by the wayside. And we, really, when he said a hundred thousand dollars a year to fix them, we've never spent anything except for Band-Aid types of things that we've been doing through the years with the buildings. And, um, and then we haven't allowed for growth, so that departments in the town have no place to go. I mean, and then we've used the stage and the, you know, as we were growing, I mean, that was a big wide room upstairs and a stage and so forth and became, you know, um, offices, I think, in the seventies and so forth, and we, we used what we had. But we need to, we need to think about, we have historic buildings, we own them, how can we best use them? And that's up to all of us to decide. And we're gonna own them anyway, so if we did try to sell them, we would have to make a lot of improvements in order to sell them to begin with. So why not use them in some way? And I think we can find a good use, um, here. And maybe it's going to come to, actually, the town hall needs all the space that's at the schoolhouse with the town hall to get more space. I don't, I question how much more space you were getting when they were talking about the library going there because you're not gonna pick up a lot of space. And we, you need conference rooms and maybe have a community room there that can be, shut off the rest of the building so that, I mean, really, um, we've used the church, the church, for instance, but we were going to Myrick's, VFW, because there was no community room to utilize in the town. And, uh, even all our committees, we meet in the hallway, I mean, to have a committee room. So, you know, we really need to look at it. You know, there is grant money available for historic buildings. I mean, we have already started with it, with the schoolhouse and, and at least it's sound. But there's more available and certainly, um, they'll work with us. But all these things are so needed. I mean, we, I mean, we need, and we need a library, um, if you're just, I just went at the Guilford Hathaway and the number of people that go there for that little space is amazing. But it's, some of them walk, and so that, that's something we have to think about, et cetera.
It's a handful of people.
You know, but, uh, that they u- utilize it frequently. And it is a busy place, it is a busy place. You'd think it wasn't because of computers, but I think it's increased because of computers and the library. The police department, I mean, the facility is so small. You know, the seniors, we're all getting there and it's funny because we lost our drugstore and one of the things when we were trying to encourage a drugstore, an independent drugstore, the biggest thing they want to know is the percentage of seniors in this town. And Jackie said it's really, keeps going up, doesn't it?
Yeah. Because I keep doing the list for Mary. I put, not Mary, I'm sorry, for, um, Barbara. I, I forgot what the number was now, but we, I was shocked when I gave her the list on, on how big it was.
They look for a bigger percentage, you know, and the, the...
We have twenty-five seventeen seniors to the eighty-eight seventeen on the census of the town.
So about thirty, this is about him?
Yep.
It's a good thing that that number keeps climbing because that means at the other end, nobody's dropping off that quick.
But the, the thing is, one thing, um, you know, in my background and education, I think we have a lot of space at Preetown Elementary. And it's too bad in some form that we could not utilize some of that space. And I think if we come down to, you know, a new town hall and so forth, we're gonna need to put people in different places for temporary while constructions going on and think about the elementary school and the rooms that are there, uh, that are available. Is there any way, you know, it's too bad that the library and so forth couldn't have tied in because that's a centrally located building and we want a library to be central. And it's too bad that it couldn't tie in with this, you know, a wing of the school, you know, or something, too.
The kids could use it too, if the library was there. The planning committee has discussed that possibility. So it's not, it's not, um, for us, it's not off the books.
I mean, years ago, I mean, and I worked in the school system where we would walk the kids to the library.
Yep.
And so how wonderful to get the kids really exposed and immersed in the library by having it right there.
Yeah.
Uh, so, I mean, if we could connect our library close by to the school, I think, it'd be...
Mary, does the, um, historic, uh, the Preetown Historic Commission have any suggestions for parking space? That, through this whole thing, that's one thing they said for every time they were talking about using the...
I think there are things that we could come up with.
There's not enough parking space, that is a big thing.
They're not gonna like some of these ideas, but one would be for the people that work there to park along in front of the Band-Aid because that's all-town property. And that would free up the, the parking lot.
Yeah, but, well, come, uh, it, it would free it up at times like next year, for instance, in November, we're gonna have early voting at the town hall. It's gonna run the same time the taxes are due. Even if that, every, almost every space was out, we only got one handicap space.
There would be people that people are waiting to get Hopkins...
To whom are, would be told that people are waiting to get parking spaces, and I know there's a lot of, uh, employees, but, I mean, um, there's like, what, thirteen of us, fourteen of us that have cars to park in front of the B and C? I don't know.
You got parked.
Yeah, and then we got park timers too, so they do take, we do take up, because there's more employees there.
They were cars parked, you all parked down there. And it was sort of like, when I grew up, uh, in town, there was, that was a busy section, and Ryan Higgins and there were, you know, there were stores there, and that's where people parked. And they parked along the sidewalk, too. It would sure slow down traffic. Uh, that might, they might not hit the bridge so often. Uh, but, I mean, and there, there is, I, and some other, we would be talking about some other ideas and, you know, I didn't want to bring them up here tonight, but there are some other ideas.
And I got one more question for historic before anybody moves on. They're gonna have to gut out that whole thing from what they talk, it's only gonna be the frame. Would it lose the town hall if they do the town hall on, on any of the three options they gave? What, um, would happen as far as being on the historic record and everything because the historic values are gone? Wouldn't it be, or am I mistaken?
They can do, no, 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 they can do that. They can get, I just got in the house and I maintain the, you know, historical integrity, right?
Yeah, but it was, but it wasn't just a frame from what they sound like they're gonna do?
Oh, yeah, it was.
It was?
Yeah, woodwork and things like that, windows and.
That's what I was wondering. Would, would it lose the historic?
Churned and, you know, you can.
Well, the exterior frame will be, that'll, that'll stay.
Well, the, the talking inherent is.
Well, this is just this person's idea.
The whole foundation, the whole exterior, and it.
You know, if you went to.
Talking about the frame.
Well, the frame is the exterior of the building. The interior would change.
They don't, they don't take every single thing. If you go to Edgar Town or if you go to Neantucket and see what they've done with their old town halls, and they got its sections and so forth.
It still maintains the historic value, okay?
And you would do it, you know, within, and we were doing that, massive stroke, we certainly need projection.
Yeah, she said that.
I was, I was surprised, like Kevin was, that they were talking about redoing the foundation at the town hall. That surprises me, you know. I, I don't think that would be something that would, would bring value.
With the, with holes in it and everything, they wouldn't be able to hold up. I wouldn't think this new building, that they're gonna have to put in new wiring, new plumbing, new bathrooms, so everything that they gotta do.
How long have they been there now?
Well, I don't know. It's a pretty.
Well, they got eighteen thirty, but it's eighteen eighty-eight.
I was gonna say, I thought it was eighteen eighty-eight. I read on like eighteen thirty.
Yeah, I can make it a couple of years old.
But it's, it's, it's possible to do it and maintain the integrity.
Higher cost, though. I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. What you doing?
It's a grant.
Right. I, 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 I'm not discounting that, but we, all things are, are being talked about, so.
Again, if you're gonna sew a line down though and everything, if you figure in everything, not just.
Yeah, parking's a night, parking's a nightmare. I, I love the look of it.
Yeah.
But the reality is, until we get more parking, until we have an adequate place to put sewage, you know, something, it's a difficult nut to crack. It really is. Regardless of whether they're gonna put new foundation or, you know, historical, uh, compliance, it's, it's just, it's physical location is difficult.
And I keep, I, I love that you were saying historic. It does have a lot of historic value. But we've gotta remember that there's plenty of historic value on this side of town.
Of course there is.
Too. But I'm saying, Assonne, it does. And I know in here, they were saying it'd be hard to sell to a private firm. We don't wanna let the building just go, so that would have to be, decide what to be done. And they said that maybe no private firm or anything would want to take that over because of how expensive it would be. So, I don't know the answer to what, if we didn't use it, what would happen. But again, looking down the line, um, from what they're showing in here and stuff, I don't know if that's gonna be enough room to meet the, all the needs.
I'm not really sure either, but here's the thing. I think that the more that we use technology, the less you're gonna see foot traffic at town hall. I think you'll always get those people that go to town hall, but I think that the, the younger families that move in, they're gonna go online, they're gonna get their permits, and there's, you're gonna, you're gonna see the older people go to town hall. But you're gonna see.
Digitalized stuff.
Yeah, you're gonna digitalize it.
It's like shopping now. Well, she hits back, and my smack is she'll hit me back.
So, I mean, so those are things that take in.
Delivering things, they won't have to go to the town hall.
Right, but I think that those are things that are situation, like, you don't, you don't.
Some offices, you're absolutely right.
Yes.
You know, now we're taking electronic water pump, sure. But other offices, building department, planning, maybe construction, maybe you have.
Correct.
Developers and contractors and engineers coming in.
That's correct. But I think that other things.
So, I think when we decide how much space we're going to give to these, we, we need to take that into consideration. You know, I looked at what was proposed briefly on for water department space where it was identified on one of the plans somewhere. And in my, to be selfish, water department is a separate, it should be a separate entity, regardless of where the location, but we need an office, we need a meeting space. You know, we have equipment we need to have, we have storage that needs to be met. We can't all do it in an office, in one.
Yeah, that's another issue.
That's why I'm a lot tense with the DPW because they have the garage.
Well, that's what I'm using the DPW now. So, I think when, when these folks are, or whoever we hire, and when they're gonna be designing these things, it's, we need to understand that, to Mary's point, historical commission's got stuff at home, you know, so people got.
Yeah, but what we think of the town hall now, you think of the town hall as it exists rather than something we.
Where it can be.
Yeah, but no, yeah, but how many of these places could be somewhere else, like, you know?
Absolutely.
Like you could be somewhere else.
Give me the old police station. I can fix the plumbing.
That's been considered. No, that's been considered.
So, that's gone, see what I'm saying?
Right. You say it's based that big, Mary, but to, to be real, we, we are, we're gonna be a water and hopefully a sewer department, right? We, we're gonna have development, it's coming, it is what it is.
You have meters and everything else.
You have vehicles that you wanna keep secure at night. You know, so if there was a two-way garage, now that's, so, uh, space gets eaten up to the.
So, you're gone, so we got room.
So, so, so listen, it's getting close to eight o'clock, almost to my bedtime, because as you people have told me, I'm old. But that's okay. But you know what? I think this is a good discussion tonight because we all know everybody's needs.
Yeah.
Certainly, from my perspective, I think that we have some valuable property down in the center of Assonne, the town hall, the schoolhouse. We own it. We should do something with that property to make it workable for the town. If we're gonna have a new library and COA building, if we could have a joint building, we would free up two buildings here. We can move water and sewer to the old police station or here. You can put building and health. We have options where we can mitigate the total cost. But I think the committee has to sit down and say, what do we need? What's the first building we need to, to address? And I'm gonna tell you from my perspective, and you heard the guys from the police department, the, the board of selectmen last night just added a police officer in the budget for next year because we need it, because of the responses and so forth, okay? We added one to the fire department because we need it. So, I know the PD is cramped. I know Gary's doing fire. He takes care of the building over there. They're in, they're in fairly decent shape over there. It's a new building. But these guys need a new, they need a new building. If we, if the, and that's up to the committee. It's not up to me, but I'll just tell you how I look at it. If we did something there, and then we take and we move people up and put them in the existing buildings and do something for library, seniors, and then do, that's, that's how I'm thinking. But you know what? I'm one guy. Anyway, I appreciate everybody coming and.
Can I just ask one more question? I know I'm, I'm gonna, and I'll shut up, I promise, Paul.
No, you can't.
You never will.
You can't. You can't.
Okay.
Can't ask another. Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, no, I, to Lisa's point, this is a long, drawn-out process. This may take a year, two years, right? What, what I, what's that?
Hopefully not that long.
No, hopefully not that long. But what I noticed in, in the, a report about the town hall, and again, I'm gonna be selfish because that's where I work and some others here, there are immediate quality of life issues. And when I say that, I mean asbestos, we have a fire escape that needs to be tested. I don't know if any of this stuff has been done, but are we prepared as a town select board, tincom and all, to go to town meeting to ask for some of the money now to take care of some of these immediate issues?
We set aside money, uh, we're gonna be meeting again Monday night to do the art, but we always set aside money for building repairs. Uh, we've done that for the last three years. And as you know, I mean, you, you work day to day with us. We've done a lot.
Oh, absolutely. That's my point. A lot has been done, has been done there. You know, some of the asbestos problems have been taken care of, you know, and all that.
And, and you know what? We've been at this for a long time. I mean, the town has been here for a long time. We just haven't paid attention to our own infrastructure. We just haven't done it.
I mean, we've given money to other things and schools and so forth, and towns.
You're right.
I don't know. But, I, it has to be sequential anyway when you talk about it. We would have to have a library and, uh, senior before we could give up some of the other space. And so, it will have to be planned out.
It has to. But to, to Paul's, to Paul's point though, too, there is a need, a specific need that has to be addressed before some other needs.
Right.
Some spaces are adequate, even though they have to be fixed, are still functioning adequately, where some spaces are not. And the police station.
And then some have, have passage and everything.
Oh, absolutely.
To say that, that you can function and.
But.
Be around asbestos and everything. And to say that, well, others might need those things, I don't know.
It's.
So, I think that, um, I think that we'll, like, make an agenda and reconvene in two weeks, all right? Put your thoughts together on where we should go. I mean, like I said, this is a long, drawn-out process. We could probably whittle things down and, and talk about, more about space needs and where people can move and things like that. At the same time, I think that the building inspector did put together things that do need to be immediately addressed in some of the buildings.
Well, yeah. I mean, the, the major thing that we addressed this year was the police station. It was beyond a horror.
No, no, I mean, for the upcoming town meeting.
Yeah, we put a few things on, yeah.
So, we'll probably discuss some of that, so everybody knows that we are still taking, or trying to take care of some of the buildings.
Yes, I do.
And then I think we should talk about, um, places and other, other buildings that have been renovated and or new police stations that we might wanna visit at some time. So, we get an idea of what a historic building renovated looks like or versus a new town hall versus a new police station. Um, so, anyway.
You guys, Thursday, um, Thursday, Friday, Wednesday or Thursday night, what's better for everybody here?
Wednesday night.
Wednesday.
All right, Wednesday night. How about Wednesday? You wanna do it in two weeks, you said, please?
I think two weeks.
That would be the fourth.
I'd say the fourth.
May fourth, is that good for you?
I'm, I'm not available, that's okay.
You sure? Well, it's not okay.
I'm not available on the fourth.
You've been a question mark now, you know?
Not that big. So, I feel the committee, there's enough people if I miss an immediate. I don't want anybody to.
You can do it on the eleventh.
It's fine. That one's fine.
That one's fine. How about you? Eleven, how's that?
Can make it work.
We'll do the eleventh then.
All right.
Is six good enough for everybody?
Yes, yes.
Hopefully, we won't go until eight.
Six.
Police association, bring a pizza next time.
I suggest a board in the next meeting to put him appointed, since he should be probably.
He's the building, building commissioner?
He's not, yeah, he's not on the committee, so he should have.
Can you put that in your notes, Mr. Minister?
He's not appointed to the committee, and I would think that you would wanna be.
Is that okay with our board?
Absolutely.
They're residents.
Oh, yeah, but he's the building commissioner, so.
He may be some, he may be some value for us, you think?
And he's gonna be an associate member. You don't have to be a, a resident.
Okay.
Gonna be a, yes.
An associate.
He should be, yes.
He's not a taxpayer, so it's kinda hard for somebody to say this is how you should spend your money when you're not a taxpayer.
Oh, so you're saying maybe as an associate?
So, he doesn't have a voting say?
I wouldn't tell you how to spend your money.
Unless you move in. If you move in.
No, you probably wouldn't.
As an advisory number, not a voting number.
So, anybody that, uh, oh, I don't, Bob Joe's, okay, there's only two. All right, very good. So, if you guys put down your email, that's how we'll.
Yep.
Okay, that sounds good. I just wanted to put it in here. My memory falls out with my teeth, so every day it gets worse. A cup, a little cup. It's full right now. So, we gotta add more.
I have a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any who oppose?